I'll call the meaning to order of March 19th, 2012 with a moment of silent meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item up is to render a decision on ordinance establishing director of emergency management. Purpose of the ordinance is to bring the town into compliance with state law. And it's something that the town just never got around to, so we can get around to it tonight. Does anybody have any comments?
I'll make a motion that this ordinance be adopted.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I had concern about this was, and I assume that if there's ever vacancy in the office, that we have that covered temporarily.
You mean like now?
Yeah, but I'm saying it's either the manager, the chief of police, or whoever. I went as a vacancy. But we're complying with the state requirement. Not really much we can talk about, other than we're fulfilling something that we're required to do.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda.
I want to pull February 21st, 2012, and I do want to talk to the town clerk about that.
I make a motion to accept the animal control official town clerk, tax collector, which will include adjustments, the tax assessor, which includes statements and supplements.
So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, February 21st.
Yeah, I'm not going to vote on these today. I want to talk to Lisa about these. One section in the end, and I did call Laurie.
What page, please? Last page?
Okay, I do have a problem with number two.
Number two?
Page number two on top. Says councillor Hurst noted he had objected last year to the procedure of having the group to be regulated involved in the process, as concerns had been in the way it was handled. In regards to the start time, he stated often that the only days for enjoyment were people were on weekends and that Hopton was better. I think I also mentioned that I thought there should be a more cross-sectional community, so I want to review the tape. And maybe I'll let it stand.
Okay, then we'll just, we can take that.
And then the other thing at the end, and just make a mention who made the motion to it. And there's one typo also, but that's all created, which I didn't notice. But I think I just noticed.
Page 12, is that what you mean, Scott?
What?
Page 12 at the top, right?
Yeah, and...
What was the problem with the motion, which motion?
No names are mentioned.
Oh, I see.
And I think what we got to do, because I think our, really how detailed our council meeting should be, because a lot of town is not as detailed as our content. Because, you know, I think we're very fortunate to have good staff in the town clerk's office. I think some of the councils, including myself, might be a little picky on things when they're that detailed, but legally, they don't have to be as detailed as they are, you know, about discussions and stuff like that. Talked to Laurie today.
Okay, then we just, we'll put those in another day, another meeting.
I just want to acknowledge the evidence the town clerk's office has in dealing with councillors and doing all the work they do, because they're very important to the council.
Now that it's tabled.
Well, it's not really tabled.
Oh, okay. I have a quick question on page seven, top, mentioned about the EMA Emergency Management Grant. I thought it was $6,500, not $5,000? So I don't know. It's just a question slash, what's the grant, $6,500 or $5,000?
The stipend for the EMA director is $6,500.
Right.
But the grant itself...
I think it was 65. Didn't it match the amount of the stipend? I think it did.
It's a good question. I can't recall. It might have been.
I think it does.
It might have been 65.
Yeah. Anyway, it's $5,000 in the notes, so I just figured. I'm sure it matched, because I remember that. That was it to me.
Okay. First public forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the public forum, at the public forum? Town managers' report.
Thank you. On March 1st, I met with DPW Director Tim Teft and one of the real estate representatives, Gil Brickall, from Rhode Island Department of Transportation at Town Hall. Then we traveled to Ashaway Road to conduct a site inspection. In order to make needed and planned improvements to Route 216, Rhode Island DOT needs to condemn 1,868 square feet of town property. Basically, these are just three culverts that run underneath the roadway and extend on the town property. But DOT needs access to these areas that abut the roadway and is planning on condemning the property to secure three permanent drainage adjustments from the town. The documents were forwarded to the solicitor's office, Pat Buckley, for her review. And the matter is tentatively scheduled to be placed on the town council agenda for the April 2nd meeting. And the roadwork, the reconstruction of Route 16, is expected to start sometime in the fall of this year. On March 5th, I convened a meeting at Town Hall to discuss the town's proposed hazardous mitigation plan status. And we're fortunate that Emily Pish, who is one of the mitigation officers from Rhode Island EMA, attended along with Tim Teft, Dave Palmer, Matt Damaris, and myself. And this was a very productive meeting. We met for about an hour and a half. We reviewed the plans and basically we divvied up the assignments among everybody at the meeting in order to bring them up to speed. I spoke with Emily this afternoon, and all the documents, the deadline was tomorrow, but we finished ahead of time. And we revised all the documents that FEMA had sent back to us for revision. We sent them up to Emily at Rhode Island EMA. And she called me and also sent me an email today to say basically that REMA has tentatively approved all of our revisions. And as soon as we can incorporate them into the master plan, follow that up to her, she's going to send them with her recommendation up to FEMA, so that we can get that plan approved. It's also got to be brought before the council before it's finally approved one more time. And then we're going to be all set for that South Drive $100,000 grant. So that's moving along very well, and hopefully we'll get the green light in a matter of 30 days or so. And just lastly, we had the business outreach forum on March 9th here at Town Hall in council chambers. Governor Lincoln Chafee, Director Keith Stokes, several other state business department heads, and Town Council President Sylvia Thompson spoke at the meeting. Officials described the various business services that are available to businesses throughout town and stayed to answer their questions during the meeting. Numerous business owners were present at this well-attended meeting. And just a special thanks to Gemma Lambier, Linda St. Armel, Matt Damaris, and Lisa Cook-Martin, and other employees for organizing this forum that made it such a successful event. And it did get a lot of good publicity from the Wesley sons. And that's it. Thank you.
Questions? Barbara?
I have a question on the first issue. They're planning on condemning the property to secure three permanent drainage adjustments. Where are those drainage adjustments?
They're right on...
Which is our neighborhoods?
Yes. They're right on the edge of Route 216, on Crandall Field property?
All three of them?
Yes.
Are they going to improve those drainage areas?
Yes, they're going to reconstitute the drainage underneath the road on both sides of the road, too.
That's great, because it's been eating in there quite a bit.
That's part of the reconstruction project. They have others on Route 216 also, but they happen to be on private property, so. The reason they came to us, because three of the culverts were on Crandall Field property, town property.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I have to say, the "end", it says "end". I guess Joyce types up every word, right? Did Joyce type this? I didn't know if it was on...
Can't remember.
I got a kick out of that. All right, next up, new business. Bill, community awards.
Yes, thank you. We're very fortunate over the last couple of weeks. We received two awards from the trust, and as we all know, the trust is the insurance agent for the town of Hopton, along with like 36 other cities and towns in Rhode Island. And we applied for $1,000 grant for our DPW, and Tim Teft was instrumental in that. And basically, the money is forwarded to the town to purchase radio headsets to enhance communication between like the workers during the tree trimming process. And we ordered two of them and came to, I think, $980. So it's a reimbursable grant. We buy them and they reimburse us for the money. Every couple of years, we're fortunate enough to get these grants. We also received a second grant, a second award. And on Thursday, March 8th, Tim Teft and myself responded up to the Crown Plaza Hotel in Walbrook for the trust's annual award ceremony. And basically, we won one of the awards as a recipient for the loss prevention leadership award. And very basically, the trust recognized the town of Hopton for its contribution towards excellence and risk management by working to identify risks and make recommendations to improve worker safety. The town of Hopton has a stellar record in both property liability and workers' compensation insurance. Only one claim was reported from the town of Hopton during the 2011. In addition to that, DPW kind of took the lead on this. They had some training for its employees. In 2011, safety training was provided in the areas of hazard communication, Rhode Island rate-to-know, drug and alcohol testing requirements for CDL drivers, and supervisory regional training on electrical and energy safety. And on behalf of the members of the trust, you know, I'd just like to commend Tim Teft, DPW, and his employees for outstanding work and service, and also for the finance department in keeping these claims down and the costs down, and hopefully that will eventually result to increased savings for the town of Hopton.
Any questions?
I'd like to really thank you, Bill. I think in the last couple of years, we've really had more of our departments go in for more and different kinds of training. That has really been useful, and I know they haven't had that in years. So I'm really pleased that you're moving this forward on all different levels and from all different kinds of departments.
Well, thank you. And a lot of the training that we have been getting, not only at DPW, but also at the police department, has been free of charge. It's been put on by the state at their expense or the insurance companies at their expense. So it's basically free training for our employees. It's something that we just needed for a long time and can't give up, so.
Sounds good. But you make sure they follow through on it.
The training, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, at this time, we'll break until 7:30 when we start the next thing on the agenda, so we can just recess, have a recess for now.
Do you want to move the second public forum up?
No, no, because it's advertised the way it is. You know what I mean? What we're going to do is we're going to talk about the open meetings more today. And what I'm going to do is keep it right over to our solicitor.
Okay, I'm just, what I want to do is just to start things off is introduce the members here. We've got sitting over here on the left, Lisa Pinso and Mike Field. They're from the Attorney General's Department from the open government section. This is, as you can see from the nameplates, Franklin Dolphy, Barbara Capalvo, Council President Sylvia Thompson, Council Vice President Tom Buck, and Scott LaVera, so the end over there. I asked the Attorney General's people to come down after to have some conversations with Barbara about, you know, open government rulings and open meetings rulings that I made along the way. And I thought it would be to everybody's benefit, maybe, to hear from the horse's mouth what they think about some of the issues that we confront over and over and over again. So that's why I asked them to come, and they were very kind to come down and do this for us. So I'm going to ask, Lisa, are you going to be doing the heavy lifting here? Okay, well, if you come up to the podium, because this is recorded, so I'll help with the recording. And if you could, I mean, you can start however you'd like, but the issue that's of concern primarily to the council, that has become of concern, I should say, is the circumstances under which the council members themselves can raise issues that are not on the agenda. Under what circumstances during the meeting can they raise issues that have not been listed on the agenda? That seems to be a topic that's kind of recurring and that I've been strict about telling them they basically can't do. So if you could just maybe start with that, and then I think people have other questions that they'd be kind of jumping with. Yeah, please.
First of all, we want to thank the council for having us and for Pat inviting us. It's always nice to come down here and would have been nice if a little bit lighter so we could have gotten a full view of the town, but we appreciate it. I guess to start with that question, when can something be raised during a meeting that's not on the agenda? The answer really is, is it can't. The Open Meeting Act is really strict, and there's actually Rhode Island Supreme Court opinion, Tanner versus Town of East Greenwich, the Town Council of East Greenwich. And Tanner is remarkable for a lot of different reasons. It's rare for the Rhode Island Supreme Court to review open meeting matters. There's only a couple, the law's been in existence for 20, 30 years. There's only a couple of open meeting cases that the Supreme Court has examined. And there's only one case where the Supreme Court has examined, in particular, the language that we're talking about today, which is 4246-7, I'm sorry, 6, which states that in Section B, that the notice shall include the date, the notice was posted, the date, time, and place of the meeting, and a statement specifying the nature of the business to be discussed. And the Rhode Island Supreme Court in Tanner talked about that last requirement, that public bodies have to provide on their notice a statement specifying the nature of the business to be discussed. That's one reason Tanner's remarkable, because there's actually an opinion by the Supreme Court that's directly on point. The other reason, which I guess is a little bit frustrating to lawyers and to members of public bodies who just want to do what the law requires them to do, is that the Supreme Court acknowledges that there are no bright line rules with regard to this requirement.
There are no what?
Bright line rules.
Bright?
Bright line rules. There's no black and white answers. There's no, this clearly is sufficient, this clearly is not sufficient. At one point, towards the end of the Supreme Court's opinion in Tanner, the Supreme Court even acknowledges that reasonable minds can differ what is and what is not sufficient for an agenda item. So at the Attorney General's Office, we always say, more notice is better notice. That's going to help you down the line. It's going to provide, you know, the more notice that there is, the less chance that somebody's going to complain that what was being discussed by the council was not sufficiently specified on the agenda. So the short answer is, the Open Meeting Act in 4246-4246-6B requires a statement specifying the nature of what's going to be discussed on the agenda. Your agendas have to include a statement specifying the nature of what's going to be discussed on the agenda. If a topic comes up during your meeting that is not on the agenda, it can't be discussed. Having said that, there is a way in the Open Meeting Act that addresses that, and that's to amend the agenda. The Open Meeting Act does provide and does allow, and different public bodies are more or less lenient or invoke this provision more or less often, but it is in the Open Meeting Act, so I think I need to say that. But if something is not on the agenda, a council or a public body can amend its agenda. The council can do that right at the meeting. They can do it when the issue comes up, and it's by majority vote. The council would simply say, this is a matter that's come up, it's not on the agenda, we seek to amend the agenda, to add X, Y, Z to the agenda. All in favor? As long as it's a majority vote, then that matter is added to the agenda. Just one caveat, the matter that's amended to the agenda is for informational purposes only. It can't be voted on. Except for an emergency, and an emergency is such a limited circumstance, I'm not even going to go into it unless somebody wants me to talk about it. But it's for informational purposes only. So that's really the longest answer to the short question. You know, something that's not on the agenda can't be discussed, could be amended. That's really the answer to the question.
I just have a quick question, a moment. Aside from amending the agenda, I had heard, and I talked to a colleague of mine that's in Pawtucket, that you can have what's called a point of personal privilege that can be spoken without it being on an agenda relative to any topic. And I'm not sure to the extent of how far you can talk about that. Can that be in a majority? Would that be allowed to be spoken if everyone's okay and no one objects to it, I guess? Can you maybe speak to that? Because that's what I thought was maybe like a loophole, but a way to...
To discuss, yeah.
We used to have that on our agenda.
I prefer not to open it up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If that's all right, go ahead.
We used to have that on our agenda before I became solicitor, and it was called council's personal privilege. And then there was a complaint made to the Attorney General's Department, and that was handled partly by the previous solicitor, because it happened then, partly by me, because it was still continuing when I came on. And the Attorney General's Department sent us a very nice violation ruling saying, you can't be doing that. So we promptly, actually, we took it off the agenda when I became solicitor, because it wasn't proper. So because, for the same reason, Frank, that we've now taken the general headings of town managers' report, solicitors' report, presidents' report off, because when I was at the open government summit in the summertime, which Lisa and Mike both presented, it became very clear, there was a nice slide up there that said, headings like this are not appropriate. And one of them, I think, said director's report. And I said, okay, well, we're not going to be doing that anymore. I think for the same reason, council's personal privilege, because it didn't contain a notice of what people were going to talk about was not...
Yeah, I just read that.
But that's, I just wanted to give you the Hopton-specific background on that. Lisa, feel free to...
You're right, Pat. You aptly did away with that agenda item. That was gung ho, I believe. Yes, so the agenda must be specific enough to fairly inform the public of the nature of the business to be discussed. And Mike talked about Tanner. You just mentioned the general or generic headings of solicitors' report, old business, new business. Our department has found those are not sufficient, certainly. Because it would really lead members of the public to speculate on what's going to be discussed under those general headings. So it really needs to be specific enough, so that a person is not left in the dark as to what the council's going to speak about.
So it'd be fascinating to know what the heck they're doing in Pawtucket, because it doesn't sound to me like they can be in compliance with the law if they're doing a personal privilege.
Yeah, that's someone that's been there 30 years.
Let me just, well, 30 years ago, they may very well have been doing it that way. But, you know, just to take a step back, too, I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we're sitting at the AG's office going, you know, well, this is, you know, setting the agenda basically, or setting the standards, that personal privilege isn't sufficient, or that director's report isn't sufficient. Our guide is what the law says and what the Supreme Court said in Tanner. And that, what the law says and what the Supreme Court says, is that the agenda's about what's going to be discussed during a meeting has to contain a statement specifying the nature of the business to be discussed. So when we get a particular fact pattern, whether it's a question about a director's, you know, an agenda heading that says director's report, or police chief's report, or councillor's personal privilege, the question that we're asking ourselves really is, does that agenda item contain a statement specifying the nature of the business to be discussed, or as Lisa said, and as the Supreme Court said, does it fairly inform the public of the nature of the nature of the matter that's going to be discussed? And just having an agenda item there that talks about police chief's report, or treasurer's report, or councillor's personal privilege, the way we answer those questions are, if we're sitting in the audience and look at the agenda, we have no idea what's going to be discussed. And that's not to say to you, and we've said this in our findings, too, that's not to say that every single matter and every single thing that the council's going to discuss has to be on the agenda verbatim. That's obviously not what we're getting at either. And that's not what the Supreme Court has said, and that's not what the legislature has said. But there has to be some sort of an indication, the police chief's report, we're going to talk about traffic violation, whatever it is, just some sort of an indication of what's going to be discussed. You could have councillor's privilege on the agenda and have an indication of what it is that you want to talk about. I think that's fine. But just having councillor's privilege on the agenda without any other information, I think that's where the issue is.
Now, one of the things that's come up, actually, two different things I'm going to ask you about specifically, because they've come up recently. One is that one of the council members wanted to compliment one of the town employees about something. There was no agenda item indicating that that was going to, I'm sorry, Barbara, am I misstating it?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you were, I thought you were making a face about it.
I'm sorry. No.
There was no agenda item for it, you know, and so she wanted to talk about it, she was told she couldn't talk about it because it wasn't on the agenda. Other than adding it as an item to the agenda, is it accurate to say that that can't be brought up if it's not on the agenda?
Lisa and I were talking about this exact example, and, you know, I always like to quote the Supreme Court, because when you quote the Supreme Court, you can't go wrong. Justice Jackson once had a famous quote, one of the judges on the US Supreme Court, and of course, I'll say it wrong and backwards, but his quote was that the Supreme Court is final, not because it's always right, but it's right because it's final. So, you know, when you quote the Rhode Island Supreme Court, you can't go wrong, and they said at the end of the Tanner opinion that reasonable minds can differ. And Lisa and I had an extended discussion about this exact issue. You know, I don't know the answer. I think it really depends on what's happening at the meeting. And if there's a discussion going on where the police chief and whoever it is is giving a report, and councillor says, you know, chief, good job, I think that that's incorporated. I don't think that that's an issue. If it's an issue where there's nothing whatsoever on the agenda, and a council member says, you know, by the way, I just want to commend somebody, you know, for this job, you know, I don't know the answer. If it's a situation where there's a little bit more of a discussion, you know, I think that that's more of a violation. So there's just, there's not always a clear answer. And particularly, you know, Lisa and I are talking about this after the fact in our offices with, you know, the Tanner opinion in front of us, and, you know, I think like Chief Justice Weisberger used to say, you know, not in the heat of the battle, not in the trenches of the Superior Court. It's different, you know, and we acknowledge that in our findings. It's different when you're here at a meeting, and you got to make a call. You know, that's different than, you know, the weeks and the months that we're allowed to review that call. So, you know, there's a sliding scale. We've always said that, you know, caution is the better approach. Reasonable minds can differ.
Let me ask you about one other instance, and I think this one, our town manager always gives a little bit of a report to the council about what's been going on in the preceding two weeks. And what we started doing now is we list the topics he's going to cover. Every once in a while, a council member might have a question about something that he raised, say a month before, you know, it might be an ongoing construction project, and a council member wants an update, or when are we going to take care of the repairs on Route 216? Or, you know, something like that that's not contained within... Or, you know, something like that, that's not contained within the listed items for his agenda. And the ruling that I've been making on that is, no, if it's not listed in his remarks, if it's not listed on the agenda, then you cannot bring up something, even for informational purposes only, if it's not listed on the agenda. What's your position on that?
Right, Pat, I think I would err on the side of caution, certainly, if it's not on the agenda. It's not proper. And keep in mind the 48-hour requirement. If someone's at a meeting in February, and they want to revisit something that was said that the town manager said, or they have questions or concerns, you have a whole month to have thought about that, to say, oh, I want to revisit that, as long as you're within the 48 hours, obviously, you can amend the agenda to add that, to say, you know, I want to revisit Route 216. So, that's...
Now, the things that we're talking about, we're talking about them in the context of the council, but they apply to any of the boards and commissions in town, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Because we've got other people sitting in the audience that are from other boards and commissions. These, the requirement for agenda postings, and for what a body can and cannot talk about, applies to all the towns' boards and commissions, correct?
It applies to all the boards and commissions. School committees, I'm not sure there's anybody here from a school committee, but school committees are under different rules to amend their agenda. But other than that, you know, the rules are really the same. And, you know, I think the point that Lisa just raised is kind of valuable, and I say this with all due respect to the council, but a lot of these issues can also be taken care of by, you know, 48 hours before the agenda goes out, which really isn't a lot of time between when the agenda goes out in the meeting, thinking about what it is that you may want to have on the agenda. A lot of these issues can be avoided just by, you know, I want to revisit this issue. Somebody put it on the agenda. You know, and the other point, too, a lot of these things that we're saying may sound strict, but I've seen time and time again, it's really, really easy to go from whatever it may be, just the compliment, or just, I just got one quick question about this, to go from that until, into a 10-minute discussion. So it's really, it's a fluid situation.
Lisa?
I am.
All right, I'd like to turn it over to Barbara.
Yeah, thank you. I have a number of questions, some of them along the lines that Pat has, but I'd really like to explain them to you in my own words and on my own. I'm going to say good evening and thank you for coming to Hopkinton. It really was nice of you to come all the way down here, a nice little rural community. I think this council and the citizens of Hopkinton would all agree with the premise under Section 4642.1, concerning public policy relating to public business being performed in an open and public manner. That citizens be advised of and aware of the performance of public officials and the deliberations and decisions that go into making public policy. I don't think anyone here is arguing with that. Absolutely, when something is on the agenda, it is a discussion topic. And I don't see where that's any of the discussions or the issues that I have had, certainly, with the agenda. I do have two questions, since you brought up the agenda and discussions. It's if we can amend, when can we amend the agenda? At what point? Or is it at any point? That's just a simple question. I have another one.
At any point.
At any point. So it doesn't have to be the beginning of the meeting, it could be at any point, you can amend.
Yep.
And does informational only mean simply no vote? Or my understanding, it means no discussion, let alone vote? Would that be correct?
No.
Something that we want for a point of information, which is in the open meetings rules. A point of information to me is no vote and no discussion. Would that be correct?
I don't think so.
Okay, so a point of information can be a discussion?
Point, well, it's not called a point of information in the open meeting law. When you amend the agenda, it's for informational purposes only.
Right, for informational purposes only.
Right. And that would be for discussion only, no action.
So for informational purposes includes discussion?
Yep.
How nice. That's good. But it does not include a vote? And it really shouldn't get into a large discussion, I would assume. It really needs to be as a full agenda topic, if you're really going to discuss it.
You can't take any action on an issue that's been amended to the agenda, except if it's an emergency. And again, that's such a limited issue that...
Sure, I absolutely agree with you. I don't have any problem with what you've said. But now, I feel the spirit is as important as the letter of this law. I believe collectively, we are all better, not just as human beings, but as useful citizens in our own respective neighborhoods. Section 4246.6, subsection D, says, "You may not use this section to circumvent the spirit or requirements of this chapter. Your interpretation must contain the spirit, not just the letter of the law." That's 4246.6, subsection D. And I thought that was really important because in the, in the actual document, they said the spirit of your interpretation is as important as the letter of the law. And I agree with that, because the spirit is to make sure the public gets information from us in a timely manner, and they are always kept in our loop. I am very pleased with that. As the Attorney General's Office, you are responsible for the interpretation of this law. It really sort of sits in your hands. As lawyers, you can construct an elegant solution for these issues and craft a path for open and respectful communication, which has always been the intent of the open meetings laws. And I thoroughly believe in. I think it is incredibly important to bring the public in as much as possible. Now, common sense tells us that keeping the letter of the law without the spirit of the law does not give any of us, citizens or public officials, the open communication intended. It just doesn't. We are here to empower the people with knowledge of our activities, both items to be considered as well as those actually on an agenda as are now to be discussed, considered, and possibly voted upon. Therefore, an agenda item of future topics would allow the council to bring items to the attention of the public to get information or research the topic before the agenda discussion. It would let them know some of our concerns before we ask a detailed public comment, so that they are given time to be prepared. Our agendas are 48 hours in advance of a meeting, and this is not enough time for the public to react, discuss with their neighbors, and pull documentation together. The reason I bring up future topics is that the school board has, at the bottom of their agenda, future topics. And I thought it was a very good point, because we could, at that point, say, you know, we had someone speak at public forum about kennels. You know, that's a really good thing. We haven't looked at kennels for 10 years. So under future agendas, we could say, you know, Bill or Lisa, you know, our town cap, can we get information on kennels so we can review that? And then the public knows, we're going to talk about, at some point, kennels. And we have them as a future agenda, not a discussion. It's not a topic for discussion. It is simply, we would like to look into this. And that means that people in the audience also might want to look into that, because maybe they hate the kennel next door. But they didn't know we were going to discuss that at any time. So I think it gives them a chance to research, get documentation, talk to their neighbors. And then when we do put it on an agenda, they are as prepared as we are, because we have more warning than they do. So I would like you to address, that's one question, is future topics or future agenda topics, that is not a discussion, not a vote. It is just to bring an idea up that maybe we'll discuss in detail later, but not as even a full, I think information is just information and not discussion. That's one question, is how do we do that? How do I let my public know before we actually put it on the agenda that we will want that information? Or we want information because we only give them 48 hours from Friday to Monday? That's not enough time for the public to be involved. Two, we may add additional items to the agenda, is my understanding, for informational purposes only. To address an unexpected occurrence that requires immediate action to protect the public, or to refer the matter to an appropriate committee, another body, professional...
I'm sorry, can you say that last part again?
I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. It says, "For informational purposes only, to address an unexpected occurrence that requires immediate action to protect the public, or to refer the matter to an appropriate committee, another body, or official." Now, informational purposes only, which is what you said we could add to the agenda.
What section are you reading from?
Informational purposes only.
Is that C?
4246...
D? Okay.
The very bottom of the page. Now, I know no votes could be taken, and I also don't think it should be a large discussion. I think it just should be informational. There's a rabid dog, there's a rabid raccoon, it happened over the weekend. We have a rural community, we have a tree down, we have criminals targeting the elderly and others via computers and phone calls. The police chief knows about it, it needs to be announced. I also think informational purposes is the status of grants or policies that are in process. We have already discussed them. It's just, how's it going? It's the how's it going kind of area, the informational purposes. I know we're looking at the South Drive Grant. It's under RI, Rhode Island Hazardous Management. Under the town manager's Rhode Island Hazardous Management section that he has on the agenda, I just wanted to say, how's that grant going? Because if we don't do hazardous management, we don't get the grant. It was not a discussion item. It would be just, you know, is it doing okay? Is it still, you know, in the list? We aren't suddenly going beyond our time period, because that happens a lot with grants. Timely, efficacious information is crucial to our neighborhood under point of information. This vital information should be allowed for the status of earlier and ongoing agenda items, or for the health and safety of our citizens, without waiting two weeks to get on the next agenda. And that's what I had said, it's like rabid animals, we certainly have that here, rabid raccoons, rabid dogs, the downed trees in a storm, you know, do not take this road, the criminals targeting the elderly. We have computer scams, the elderly, we have a very large elderly contingent, we need to say something. And then the status of grants or policies, you know, we have a rabies clinic, please don't forget it, because we need all your dogs, you know, it's going to be a bad season for ticks and fleas, let alone get them rabies. So I have a question on future topics, a question on informational purposes only. And I think it should be for the health and safety of my citizens. And I also think it should be any kind of status for ongoing issues. And then the third question, of course, is, the weird compliments go. Ad-ous, you know, thank you, we had gorgeous flowers in front of the town hall, thank you Sylvia for planting them. It seems to me those should be at any time. I don't see where we would, you know, maybe at an efficacious time, like under the town manager, or if the solicitor has a report, you know, thanking Pat for X, Y, Z.
That'd be a first.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a first, that's not true. We do thank you all the time. But, you know, compliments, ad-ous, thanks, I think, are part of how we deal with our community. We're a little community. We're 8,000 people. You know, we're not Providence with the 20 million, or whatever it is. So if you could address future topics, which I think is a really interesting area to allow my public to get into our heads, let alone into the agenda, and informational purposes, I'd really appreciate it.
And I get to ignore number three?
I'm sorry? I didn't hear you.
It's okay. Let me start with the comment that you had about the letter of the law versus the spirit of the law. With all due respect, as attorneys, and, you know, Lisa and I started this presentation by talking about the Supreme Court and Tanner. The Supreme Court tells us that when a statute's clear and unambiguous, that we have to enforce it as it's written. And that's, you know, that's what we're going to do. Whether I, or Lisa, or the Attorney General agree or disagree with a particular provision, that's just not our job. That's just not the way government works. Any government, in any state, or any, or the federal government. The legislature passes laws in their wisdom, and the executive enforces them. And that's, and that's what we're going to do.
This is, again, 4246.6D...
I'll get to it, yeah, I know. Informational purposes...
The no public body, or the members thereof, may use this section to circumvent the spirit or requirements of this chapter.
May not use it.
It's in the law.
That's the first, that's the first thing. The second thing is, you talked about Hopkinton being a small town in 8,000 people. This law applies whether it's Hopkinton or Providence. It's one law, and I had a discussion today with somebody, it was about the access to public records law, and we talked about, one of the difficulties is that there's one law that applies to whether you're a town council in Providence, or a water board in Hopkinton, or Charlestown, or whatever it may be. Whether you're a part-time employee or a full-time employee, there's one law, and it applies to everybody, and it's not going to fit like a glove to everybody.
What if you're not an employee? What if you're volunteer?
Excuse me, ma'am. We're going to, we're going to let this go forward, and then we'll kick it to the audience. Okay?
To address the first question you had, Councilwoman, about, about a future agenda item, what has to be on the agenda is what's going to be discussed at a meeting. If nothing's going to be discussed at that meeting, there's no requirement under the open meeting law that it be on the agenda. Whether the council wants to put something on the agenda, as you suggest, to give a heads-up that this is going to come up at a future point, it's not governed by the Open Meeting Act. There's nothing that requires it, there's nothing that prohibits it. It's up to the council. And again, Lisa and I are here to tell you what the open meeting law says. And that's just not, it doesn't, one way or the other, again, require it or prohibit it. The second question was, you talked about, for informational purposes only. What's important about section D, though, is, before you get to the lines that you had read, was the beginning. And it says, "Nothing within this chapter shall prohibit any public body or the members thereof from responding to comments initiated by a member of the public during a properly noticed open forum." And to even go back a little bit further, I forget the exact year that this was amended, but this was amended in response to an Attorney General finding that we issued. And I'm trying to remember the exact context. I think it was actually a question by Richard Leach during one of the open government summits. And I joke with him now that, you know, it took me a year and a half to get out from underneath his question. But, I can't remember the advisory opinion now. But, again, we have to interpret what the legislature says. And this says that a member of the public body can respond to comments that are initiated by members of the public. It doesn't say, and this was the Kenee finding, I believe, right? The Kenee finding, it doesn't say that members of a public body can initiate comments that aren't on the agenda. And when you look back, that's consistent with what the open meeting law says, that an agenda has to include a statement specifying the nature of the business to be discussed. It's consistent with what Tanner says. And it's probably consistent with the idea that members of the public should be able to bring up an issue to their council and to their public bodies, and rather than have the members of the public body not respond to it because it's, quote-unquote, "not on the agenda," that members of the public can respond to it. But as this language says, it has to be a comment that's initiated by members of the public body. So, you know, you just don't even get into, you don't...
Comments initiated by the public.
By the public, by the public. By the public. I'm sorry.
And all five of us can talk? All five, right? If it's initiated by the public...
Yes, if it's a comment initiated by the public, the public body can respond to that comment.
Not just two of us?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
That was a ruling that we all have seen, because we dealt with it, weren't we, around the council?
When, that only two could...
Kenny versus the town of Hopkinton.
It may have been before this provision was amended.
Perfect.
I'd have to find out when this was amended and when, but I, I think that I remember that there were findings issued that as long as the council doesn't have a majority responding to a comment, that that would be okay. But based on this provision, and again, I'll just read it. "Nothing within this chapter shall prohibit any public body or the members thereof from responding to comments initiated by, initiated by a member of the public during a properly noticed open forum, even if the subject matter of the citizen's comment or discussion were not previously posted." So as long as you have open forum on the agenda, the council as a whole, or individually, can respond to comments initiated by members of the public.
Is there any other points you had in response to? No, not you, Barbara. Was there anything else you wanted to respond to?
Well, I didn't get the answer, on informational purposes only.
Was there any, are you finished?
I think I am. There was a third point, but I don't remember it now.
Go ahead, Barbara. It's just, if for informational purposes only, where do we, where in the meeting, for informational purposes only, I know we're not the... informational purposes only, I know we're not the public body, but we're not the public, where do we get to say, rabid raccoon, downed tree, health and safety? Where do we get to put that on our agenda? Do we have to, I mean, I would assume most of that would be under the town manager's portion, but how do we do that? Because we can't tell them two weeks later that they're going to have their child, you know, bitten by a rabid dog.
Yeah, you know, again, I think it's going to-
Because it happens over the weekend.
It's going to depend on what the agenda actually says, and it kind of gets to the point of, the third point that you had, I guess, which was the, you know, the compliment point. If it fits with an agenda item, you certainly can bring it up, you know, within that agenda item. If it's not on the agenda, you can amend the agenda. And it gets to that sliding scale that we talked about, you know, earlier, you know, and it's not always clear to make that call, and like the Supreme Court, you know, I said that Lisa and I get the luxury of sitting back in our office for days and weeks, you got to, you have a Supreme Court opinion, where they had briefing, and oral argument, and then presumably, you know, at least one or two or three months to issue a written opinion, that gets reviewed by five judges on the Rhode Island Supreme Court, and at the end of it, their conclusion is, well, you know, at times reasonable minds can differ. So, you know, if they're going to recognize that reasonable minds can differ on some issues, you know, I don't know how Lisa, or I, or Pat, or members of this council, or any other council, are going to come to a better answer than they're going, than the court can give. Having said that, I think that your agendas have to be as specific as possible. If there's the issue that comes up over the weekend, and it's outside the 48 hours, you can amend the agenda. If it doesn't fit within one of the other agenda items, I think those are your choices.
But if it fits under the agenda item, for instance, a rabid animal would fit under town manager, because he has to control-
I think you have to be careful.
You could just let people know that we have a rabid raccoon in this neighborhood and that neighborhood.
Yeah, I think you have to be, I mean, I understand where you're going with this, and, you know, I don't know if I agree or disagree. And again, I think it just kind of gets into what's happening at the meeting. Just the comment that you gave, is that violative of the open meetings act? You know, I don't know.
It's health and safety. I don't see how health and safety-
Well, whether it's health and safety isn't the issue. The issue is, there's not an exception here for health and safety.
I think you made it perfectly clear earlier, and you said, if something comes up, and it's health and safety, you can amend the agenda and put it on. I think that's clear enough. And if it's not on the agenda, and we speak about it, we're in trouble. But if we need to speak about it, we can amend the agenda.
I think in the exercise of caution, that's the easiest way to do it.
Perhaps that's something that, because you deal with this all the time, you might want to bring up to the AG, is how do we handle health and safety? I don't think health and safety needs to be, I mean, bringing it up as an agenda item is fabulous, but if it needs to be said, it needs to be said. I don't see where that would take a special ruling to protect my citizens. The whole purpose of a public body is to protect my citizens. So maybe it's something to bring up with the AG, to say, we need somehow to address health and safety when there are emergencies. We have floods, we have fires, we have downed trees, we have rabid animals. Somehow, that, maybe there's a part of the agenda that says, you know, regards to health and safety. You know, anything that needs to be announced that has to do with health and safety. I personally think rabies clinics is part of health and safety. Maybe that's something to bring up with the AG, to say, somehow it needs to be on an agenda so people can say that, and not be concerned about trying to say it. Because it's what we're supposed to do, it's our job.
Jessica, can I, Sylvia, I'm sorry, just a follow-up. Just so that we're very clear, though, the way the law is now, having an agenda item that said something like health and safety would not be sufficient, correct?
No.
I would try to make it more specific.
You can still adopt the agenda and put it on.
The way I've done it, and council presidents have done it for years, is if anybody wants something on the agenda, they let the council president know. The council president has time, and they're, you know, every year, whether it's by Tuesday afternoon at 12, or whatever the timeframe is, there's a procedure to follow. Now, I think you've made it clear that if there's an emergency over the weekend, something horrible happens, and we've already set our agenda, we'll say, have a Sunday night. All I do is come here and say, look, folks, we've got to add to the agenda, simple. It's an emergency, we add it to the agenda, and we do it by motion. Yes, and I think you've told us this, so that settles that. I would not put something that said health and safety on there, because I'd be willingly violating the open meetings law. I won't do it. So I think you've been clear on that. Am I missing something? Okay. Are there other questions, Frank? Do you have any?
No, just that point of personal privilege, I have questions on, but I think it's pretty clear, you can amend the agenda at any time, for something you feel, with a majority vote, add it to the agenda. I think that's pretty straightforward. I didn't know that could happen, so.
And compliments are any time.
I'm sorry?
Compliments are any time.
I got several things.
Compliments are any time.
First of all-
No, wait, wait.
Wait, one thing at a time, one thing at a time.
I don't want Barbara to be under a misapprehension, so I want to make sure we get this clear. She's speaking to Mr. Field, so let's get this resolved.
Compliments, attaboys, thank yous. We don't need to amend the agenda to say, during the finance report, thank you Rita for a great collection, thank God it's 97%. I don't have to amend the agenda to tell Rita, thank you. I don't have to amend the agenda for Tom Buck to thank the Michael, Mike Wallace, and the firemen who have just, 100 firemen were here, five companies, a mill building, no one got injured. I do not have to amend the agenda to thank my fire chief for fabulous work over the weekend, right before our meeting. I just want to be clear that in compliments, thank yous, attaboys, we can say thank you like a normal human being, because of kindness, not amending the agenda, to say thank you.
I didn't say that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I don't think you did either.
What I mentioned to Barbara-
No, no, he's saying, he's disagreeing with what you're saying, Barbara.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
He did not say you can do it any time.
Oh, so you have to amend the agenda to say thank you?
You know-
I want to make sure we're really clear, and I want this in the minutes.
Well, it's not a clear answer. You know, I mean, sometimes, and I could appreciate wanting clear answers, but, you know, like I've said a couple times, when the Supreme Court says that reasonable minds can differ, the answers that Lisa and I, or Pat, or anybody else are going to give, aren't going to be any better than what the Supreme Court says. And, you know, you're looking at a legislative enactment that, you know, quite frankly, is not, doesn't give the most specific guidance to people like you that have to set an agenda, says a statement specifying the nature of the business to be discussed. You've got a Supreme Court opinion that acknowledges it's not the clearest thing, and it puts me, and Lisa, and Pat, and, you know, ultimately you, in a difficult position. What I've said was, you know, I think it's a sliding scale, and I think it's a difficult call. I certainly believe that just even the simple compliment can lead to a discussion, because somebody else then has a compliment, or somebody else has, you know, by the way, you mentioned that, let me just bring up another point about that, there's a response to the compliment or the criticism. So I certainly believe that it has the potential to get into a discussion that's not on the agenda very easily. The easiest thing, again, is, you know, it should be on the agenda, and if it's not on the agenda, you amend the agenda. I think that that's the easiest and the safest way to go.
The other thing I heard you say, Mike, and it makes good sense to me, is that if we've got, for instance, and I hate to keep using the quote, "police chief," but if he's in front of us, talking about something, and he's talking about what the department's doing about X, Y, or Z, and somebody on the council wants to say, by the way, chief, I think you're doing a hell of a job, which we all do, Dave, by the way, then you can certainly do that.
Yeah, and that's encompassed within the agenda.
It's when something comes out of the blue, basically.
That's right.
You know, when somebody says, by the way, I learned through correspondence last week that Rita collected it 97%, she's doing a hell of a job. But I think what you're trying to draw a distinction between is, well, you got so many states we're down, and you're discussing something anyway, and it's a kind of an ancillary attaboy, as opposed to bring it in and out of blows. If you bring it in out of blow, you add it to the agenda. That's, I think that's basically-
I think that that's fair.
I'm fine.
Yeah, the reason, what we used to do before we knew about this, is, for instance, we would have a consent agenda, and we have reports, tax assessor, town manager, well, not town manager, but all the reports from all the department heads would be listed, and we just accept them. What we used to do is, we'd pull off a report, the chief of police, for instance, there was a thank you letter in there from a citizen, and we would talk about it. And we did those things until we found out you can't. So that's why the manager went to this method of, his report is now very slim, and what he does instead is he lists, if there's something he wants to bring up, he lists them on the agenda. Because, I mean, so that's the way we've dealt with it. But I agree that when it comes to compliments, there's a problem, there's a reason you're thanking someone, and then you're, you know, you want to thank the finance director because we had a surplus or something. Well, then you're talking about the surplus. So that's, so I understand why it is you can't do that, but when you look at someone, and he's in the audience, you say, gee, you're doing a great job, entirely different.
But then, okay, so that if we have on our agenda, for instance, under consent agenda, tax collector, if we pull tax collector off, like we've done in the past, tax collector or tax assessor, we can, at that point, say, I'd also like to thank them for this particular kind of work. It's on the agenda, it's under consent agenda.
If it's on the agenda, you can talk about whatever you want.
And thank them, thank you.
But it's not on the agenda, though, it just says tax collector report, it does not indicate what it is.
But the report is what you're thanking.
Unless, unless it's something, for instance, it says tax collector, which includes adjustments. Now, if we pulled that off and wanted to talk about the adjustments, it clearly lets people know that that's what we want to talk about.
If the adjustments is on the agenda?
If it says, which includes adjustments.
Right. Then the public's on notice that you're going to talk about the general topic of adjustments, which may or may not include, you know, thank you.
And the failsafe is, somebody really wants to bring something up, to be safe, you make a motion to add it to the agenda. It's not difficult. I don't encourage that, but that's the way around it. It's not, it's not right, but, anyway.
Scott?
Yes. First of all, before, I'll bring up some points, and some have already been covered, and I've been making some notes. I want to thank the audience for being here. This was an opportunity for boards and commissions to attend and avoid mistakes, and I wish more, more people were here, because I think this was a golden opportunity. I don't know if we've ever had somebody from the Attorney General's office in the years that I've been on the town council, so I thank the audience for being here, I think that's very important for councilmen, to say. A lot of times, I bring up condolences, and I know this is probably under public forum, we will recognize somebody that's died or had a connection to Hopkinton, and some of this stuff could be pretty picky, and I don't think anybody would file a complaint, but like, readjourn any memory, and, you know, because the General Assembly does it, so a readjourn a member of Jane Doe, she was involved in the garden club of the Grange, or whatever, or was served on a board or commission years ago. Is there any legal problem with that, do you think? I mean, if you're, you're really picking hairs and being pretty picky if you made an issue of that.
I don't really see, it doesn't strike me as an issue. You know, having said that, it's, I guess, being a lawyer, Lisa and I always talk about how, you know, any question that we're going to answer always has to be based on something that we've issued, or finding, or something that the court has said, and your situation doesn't, you know, it's never arisen that I'm aware of anywhere, you know, officially in Rhode Island, which may be an indication that, you know, like you said, it just, it doesn't violate the act. I mean, it just doesn't seem to be something that the council's even talking about, or acting upon, or something like that.
Honestly, I use my discretion, too, I said this to Lisa on the phone at one point. Issues that come up, that I know are probably a violation of the act, if I know they're a compliment, or a condolence, or something, that nobody in their right mind is going to file a complaint with the Attorney General's Department against us, then I'll say, just do it fast, or something, you know, just kind of, I mean, I'll try, I mean, that sliding scale you've been talking about, like, you know, I mean, I try and use discretion about things, too, when I'm able. If it's something like that, where people are not, we're not going to get a complaint filed against us, then lots of times I'll say, okay, just do it fast, or don't talk about it a lot, or something like that, and just let it go, so.
You know, the other thing, too, and again, I mean, we can go through the hypotheticals, you know, from now until next Thursday, you know, but if it's, if you're concerned about it, and you know there's going to be a condolence thing, or condolences, you know, you can also just put on the agenda condolences. There's no requirement that you list who the condolences are going to be to. You know, we have other findings that say that even if you're going to discuss somebody in executive session, that particular person, there's no requirement that they be named. So I think that it's reasonable that, you know, if you were giving condolences to somebody, there'd be no requirement. You know, I kind of agree with Pat, I mean, I don't know that it violates the act not to have it on there, in the exercise of caution, if you wanted to list just condolences, you know, I think that covers you.
How about condolences slash congratulations? I think a lot of times, when we make presentations, like somebody might have made Eagle Scout, or some other distinction, that we could do the condolences and congratulations under one line item, which we kept them separate, or how would you, how do you think we should address that, if we were to do that?
You know, my answer to really everything is, to the extent that you can provide the notice, there's just no reason not to.
I mean-
You know, even the school committees used to have to put it in a newspaper, but now there's no requirement that anybody put their notice in a newspaper, so, I mean, how detailed or non-detailed your agenda is, there's no reason not to make it more detailed. If something came up in the 48 hours after the agenda was made, because I'm not suggesting that you stand here and just amend the agenda 40 times during the meeting also, but, you know, if you know that you're going, there are going to be congratulations and condolences, and you want to just put it on the agenda in the exercise of caution, I've seen other public bodies do that.
We do do that.
Yeah, and I think that that-
Usually at the beginning of the meeting.
And I think that that covers you. You know, if you know you're going to talk about it, there's just no reason not to put it on the agenda, and avoid dealing with Lisa and I altogether.
It sounds like a good thing to put at the end of the agenda.
And ensure that anything that people bring up about the town, we can always refer that to the town manager, so if somebody asks us a question, we refer it to town manager, or we can put it on a subsequent agenda. Try to, in response to a constituent, would be basically the same thing. I'm trying to look at, how specific, we've pretty much covered that. Votes in executive session, I think we know basically what we do, but can you explain the mechanics to satisfy the law as far as when we take votes in executive session, and then we have to come out and announce how individual councillors vote? I had a complaint, first of all, School Committee in 1999, against the school committee about voting on a former superintendent's contract at the time. But I believe, if I understand the law correctly, that if we were to take a vote in executive session, that we come out and the council president announces how individual councillors voted. Could you go over that briefly?
Individual or?
I think you have to state how we vote individually.
I don't think so.
I know, I think the school committee currently does, the Sheriff.
Well, let me answer your question, and if that doesn't answer it, then we can go from there. Whether you can vote in executive session or not, starts with what exception you go in under. You mentioned that the 1999 finding, and-
I believe you're the one that responded.
You know, it sounds familiar, but I'm going to say, but I'm going to tell you that I'm actually glad to say I don't remember it by heart. But my guess is what the finding said was that because the school committee went into executive session under the first exception, that they could not vote in executive session under that first exception. And again, this gets to what, how we read and how we enforce the open meeting law and the other laws. We enforce what the General Assembly has written. And that first exception, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but it says 4246-5A1, it says that a public body can go into executive session for any discussions of the job performance, character, or physical or mental health of a person or persons. We interpret that literally as the public body can go into that, go into executive session under that first exception for discussions, not voting, only discussions. So there are some of these exceptions, reasons why you can go into executive session, that list just discussions, and it would not be appropriate under the Attorney General's findings to vote in executive session under those exceptions. So that's the first thing, not everything is permissible to vote under. If you're in executive session, and you're in an exception where you are permitted to vote, you can vote in executive session, and what the open meeting law says, I think it's 4246-4B- it's 42464B, which says that once you come out of executive session, you have to disclose the vote that was taken in executive session. There's an exception for that, and that's where the disclosure of the vote would jeopardize any discussion, strategy, or negotiation that was discussed in executive session. Once that, that jeopardy or negotiation or strategy dissipates, then there's an affirmative obligation to disclose that executive session vote. So if you're in, in executive session to discuss litigation, and you agree to settle some lawsuit, you don't need to come out of executive session at that point, presumably, and disclose that you agree to settle the lawsuit, because doing so would probably hinder the town's negotiating position. Once that lawsuit settles, then there's affirmative obligation at that point, you know, Smith versus Jones settled, we had an executive session on whatever date, we took a vote to settle the case, it was five-nothing, you know, we're now disclosing it.
Am I correct to assume, for example, when we have executive sessions, when we make a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session, does, can that be infinity, or do we have to actually, the timeframe, that eventually all executive sessions have to be public? Thirty years, 10 years?
There's no requirement to, under the act, unseal this at any time. There's no timeframe, Scott.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because of the way he was talking, I just want to make sure that was, I know it's probably off the subject, and you could take, what do you do with access to records? People might want records to speak at a public meeting, and would that be off-topic for you to answer that question, is how do you deal with people that come in?
Well, it's a little bit unfair, because Lisa asked me.
Okay.
If they should be prepared to talk about.
I apologize.
You know, the Act as well, and I told her no.
I apologize.
So, I mean, I'm sure they can speak, but it's.
I apologize for bringing it up.
You can ask me afterwards.
Okay. I do have one question.
We'll have them come down again.
You can ask me afterwards tonight.
You know, because a lot of people want information, you know, what is, what do you think is the most common mistakes that cities and towns do? Because I think most public officials, pretty much, generally from my experience locally, try to, try to comply with the law as much as practical. And what is the common mistake you think that these towns should be looking out for?
You know, I think in 13 years, I don't think I've ever gotten that question. I don't know if you, I would say with the Open Meeting Act, my guess is probably the specificity of the agenda, just because, again, you know, I think I've established the theme for the night, that, you know, there's just, the statute says, "A statement specifying the nature of the business of the, the business of the, the nature of the business to be discussed," and the Supreme Court has says, "Reasonable minds can differ," and you're dealing with a discussion that's sometimes fluid, and it's kind of, you know, it's tough to, to balance all that, so.
I got, I got two more questions, and then I'll, I'll deal. When you're doing the open meetings law, and it's really the call of the council president, but how much can you allow persons to stray from the subject? Suppose we're talking about Charro, just for an example, and it could be about the How do you, what do you think is the legal measure when you stray from the subject? You're on a subject, you're certainly discussing one subject, where you're, you're straying from it, you might be talking about the budget, you're going to say, "Well, they went out and did such and such," which might be close to it, but not really relevant. I mean, how do you measure the straying from the subject?
Judge McCall.
Yeah, I mean, you got to listen to your solicitor, and, you know, you, you as a council know when you're on the fringes, and, again, you know, reasonable minds can differ, but you do get to a point where you all kind of get that gut feeling that, you know, you made the right turn somewhere.
Yeah, I know that was a tough question, but I want to bring up, and my last one is, I don't know if they've done away with it, but in the town of Charleston, they had, before their regular council meetings, they used to have agenda meetings where they decided on what was going to be on the agenda. Is that permissible in Rhode Island?
It's permissible, but it's subject to the open meeting law.
Yeah. But you, we could, in theory, have a so-called agenda meeting, where the council would sit down, and we would decide on what should be on the next agenda, if we were so inclined.
Subject to the open meetings law.
You'd have to post the meeting, you'd have to post an agenda for the meeting, and that sort of stuff, is what you're saying, Scott.
And we're just supposed to decide on items to be discussed at the, while we're reading. Do you know, do you happen to know off the top of your head, and I don't expect to get a notice necessarily, how many towns do you do that practice?
I don't think I've heard about it in a long, long time, if ever.
Okay. I do want to thank you for coming down, and I'm glad I was able to ask questions. Thank you.
Welcome.
Tom, anything?
Nope, they've answered my question. My biggest one was, how do we respond to a public person during public forum? If you answered that pretty good, so.
Thank you.
I got no other questions.
On that same line, you had mentioned the school committee, what was it? They, they can initiate, well, they, they have different rules, I guess. When it, let me ask you a question about school committees. Can they get up, let's say they're having a meeting, can they individually, actually, whether they leave the table or not, but go to the lectern and speak under public form? Will they do that?
I don't believe so. Again, I don't think it's an issue that we've had that's come up. Again, Lisa and I were talking about this a little bit, but, yeah, I don't think that that, that satisfies the open meetings law.
So it might be wise to let Charro know that they're not supposed to do that, and just let the chairman know, and the chairman can call you and find out for himself.
They can ask their legal counsel, and, you know, if there's a question, their legal counsel can ask us for an advisory opinion.
Okay. Save us to an municipal, right? Sorry?
Yes, we can't, we can't do it.
That's how, that's how we got in trouble, I remember.
Yeah, and there's a ruling right there, where we all provided affidavits, I mean, we, three of us.
I was the president, yeah.
Three of us were there, and I mean.
I started it.
That's clear, you know, so. But I just wondered if the school committee had different rules, but they're not supposed to speak, they're likely not supposed to get up and speak under public form, any, any more than we can.
They're not different rules with respect to the main issue that you're talking, you're focusing on.
They may have some different rules about amending, I think that was the topic.
They have different rules about amending the agenda, there's actually some different rules about how they conduct a public forum, where members of the public can speak, but as far as the main substance of your question, which is basically getting up from the table and coming here, and then going back before the table, that's not substantively different.
All right. Okay, I guess, I guess that was all my questions. Barbara?
I just want to go back to one of the questions that Scott asked. When we, when they would come out of executive session, when we have to declare the vote, obviously, it's easy to do a vote when it's unanimous, but I know, I was just at the school board meeting, where they announced who voted which way. Now, is that any time it's not unanimous, you need to announce who voted yea or nay?
What the open meeting law says is that within two weeks of your vote, a record of your vote has to be made available at the office of your public body, indicating who voted which way.
So we don't have to announce it, but that we should.
I don't know, I don't, you know, I got this question recently, and I think I'm going to give you the same answer that I gave that person, which is, I don't have, I don't know of any findings that directly answer that question, that when you come out of executive session, that you need to disclose who voted in the minority. What it says in 42464B is that all votes taken in closed session shall be disclosed once the session is reopened. There are two points in the Open Meeting Act that say, when, by individual member, the votes have to be disclosed, which is, within two weeks, a record has to be available at the office of the public body, and in your minutes. Now, query, if they're going to be in your minutes, why not at that point, when you come out of executive session, just declare who's voted which way? Does it violate the Open Meeting Act not to articulate that when you, when you exit open session, or exit executive session? We don't have any findings on it, and, you know, I'll wait for, for us to, to issue a finding to answer that question.
Yeah, when we, the only time we voted, I believe, was when there were contracts, and we would vote in executive session, and then we would come out and announce. We didn't get into who voted which way, but I think.
We just voted, just the numbers.
Yeah.
Three to two, four to one, you know, unanimous.
Are you finished?
Yes, that was just, right, you have a follow-up.
Okay. Public, please, if there's anyone who has any particular questions, you want to have at it? Come on up, come up, please, to the microphone, so we can make sure we hear you. Come on up. It's not us, it's the camera there.
I am the public.
Oh, first of all, I was wondering if you could give a little idea of what.
Oh, I'm sorry, could you, oh, I'm sorry, could you give your name for the record?
Oh, I'm Marnie McNamara. And anyway, I was just asking to, for you to tell me how the public is supposed to be informed fairly. What is the stipulation in the state law that says how we are supposed to be informed? That these meetings, when they're happening, and what's on them?
The agenda, which has a 48-hour requirement, and like we talked about, it has to be a state specifying the nature of the business to be discussed and/or acted upon. So you have to know, based on their agenda items, you have to be fairly informed of what is going to be discussed.
Well, I know, I know, I mean, as a public, as a citizen, how would I read what's going, what would I get that shows me what's going on, what the meeting is? Now, if I'm a senior, or a kid, or a young person away, I don't get this, the, there's, I can't come to the town hall to get the agenda, meeting, agenda. If I don't have a computer, how else could you get it? How do old, old people don't have computers, or is there somebody? Is there some way that people have to be informed of these things?
Let's, how about the deputy clerk that answer that one, because she's the one that has to post these agendas.
Well, we post them on the website. We post them within our office, we post them at the police station, we post them outside, here on our bulletin floor.
Okay, how about newspapers? Do they, you have to have it in a newspaper?
Secretary of State's website, that'll tell.
Okay, so if you don't have a computer, you're screwed, or if you don't know how to use one, or get on the website.
No, 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 no. Out here on the, you know the little poster, I mean.
Right, but not a lot of old folks coming to the office.
Well, I don't know what to do, but it's out there, too, it's outside the building.
But there's no, no stipulation has to be in any public printed thing? Is that a new thing, or an old thing?
No, it's always been that one.
It's always been that one, yeah, okay. And, and all, do these, all of the rules, on this open meetings rules, does that apply to just the public?
No, it applies to public bodies.
Okay. And, in the two weeks, when some, when the, when the committee votes, or not committee, or a committee, or a group, the public group votes, and they have two weeks to make the records available, and that's through the town hall office, if you need to know, if you're not, it just has to be published in the newspaper, or how the town votes, or if we want to know who votes how, how do we find out who votes how? Is that public information?
There's, there's, there's two sorts of records. One is that a record indicating how each individual member voted has to be made available in two weeks at the office of the public body, which I assume would be the town hall or the council. And then the minutes have to be made available, unofficial minutes have to be made available in 35 days of the meeting, again, at the town hall.
So you can just come grab one, whatever. Now, does the public, I mean, do people, or citizens have a right to disperse these records to people, other people, right? Right, and there's no rule about that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? You got off a little easy.
I wish I could say that about most things.
But, you know, we really do appreciate you coming down very much.
Well, thank you for your interest, and, you know, we appreciate, and the invitation, and.
Well, it's kind of nice to find out things other than through rulings, where we get in trouble.
Who are you looking at me for? It was like one time.
You know, you say it was some jest, council president, but that's really one of the initiatives, you know, of this Attorney General, and frankly, other Attorney Generals. It's not been, there was a time prior to Attorney General White House, prior to 1999, where it was the office's position, and this may surprise you, Pat, if, if you don't know this, it was the office's position that you couldn't ask for any advice from the office about a particular ruling, because if you got it wrong, we might have to sue you, and that would be a conflict. And starting in 1999, it was the office's position that, through legal counsel, we, and through these presentations, we should be able to go out and educate, and answer these questions to nip, to nip in the bud, you know, the violation before it happens. And that's exactly, you know, what this Attorney General, what, what he's tried to do, and, you know, Pat mentioned the open government summit that we had in August, we had one in January for, for new council members, right after the, right after, I think, within a week or two of him even just taking office, to try and get newly elected members up to speed on these laws. So whatever we can do to, to do that, we're going to do it.
Well, I have to tell you, I mean, I've really been blessed, I've been here six years, through three councils, and I've really been blessed with councils who are committed to the open meetings law. I mean, I, I very rarely get pushback on rulings, or any, you know, problems about, "Well, I don't understand why we have to do that," or any of that. I mean, basically, you know, they're about as committed as I could ask to have a body, and, you know, one of the things I appreciate about what you were talking about tonight is, it's not always easy for me. I sit here, and I've got to make a ruling within seconds, and usually, I don't have a full understanding about what's going on. Somebody starts talking, and I'm trying to listen really carefully to make sure I'm catching it, and sometimes I don't, and sometimes I don't get it right. You know, we, I mean, we can't get it right all the time, but it's not always easy. But fortunately, you know, these guys are very committed to it, and I think, as you can see, just from the invitation, they care, you know, they really care, and we work out of hard, and we sure do appreciate the help of them, I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Did you have a question?
He's upset.
All right.
You can start one right back.
Our last public forum, is there anyone wishing to speak at the public forum? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.